I'm calling this meeting of the town of Silver City, City Council to order. Would you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic that sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda requiring action is proclamations. And since October 2016 is Arts and Humanities Month in Silver City, the town would like to recognize this with a proclamation. Would Kevin Lechner, Executive Director from the Members Regional Arts Council, please come forward to receive the proclamation? Whereas the month of October has been recognized as National Arts and Humanities Month by thousands of arts and cultural organizations, committees, and states across the country, as well as by the White House and Congress for over thirty years. And whereas the arts and humanities embody much of the accumulated wisdom, intellect, and imagination of humankind, and whereas the arts and humanities enhance and enrich the lives of every American, and whereas the arts and humanities play a unique role in the lives of our families, our communities, and our country, and whereas the Members Regional Arts Council envisions a thriving community that nurtures the imagination, enriches education, and attracts people who value authentic cultural experiences, and whereas the Members Regional Arts Council provides hands-on learning opportunities in the arts and humanities that inspire creativity, critical thinking, collaboration, and communication, and whereas the Members Regional Arts Council advises the town council that the nonprofit arts industry also strengthens our economy by generating $135 billion in total economic activity annually, $22.3 billion in government revenue, and by supporting the full-time equivalent of 4.1 million jobs. Now therefore, I Ken Ladner, Mayor of the town of Silver City, Grand County, New Mexico, hereby proclaim October as Arts and Humanities Month in Silver City and call upon our citizens to celebrate and promote the arts and culture in our community and to specifically encourage the greater participation by those said citizens in taking action for the arts and humanities. Congratulations. Thank you. If you'd like to step in.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to invite everybody. On October 27th, we're going to be having a celebration of the arts. AMROC is known for bringing people into town. On October 27th at 6 o'clock at the Hub Plaza, we're going to be celebrating artists in our community. So I invite the council and everyone here to come to that. And thank you again for the proclamation.
The next item on the agenda requiring action is public input. And there is none. So we'll move on to Agenda Item 5, Council Comments. Counselor Ray?
Thank you, Counselor Mayor. First of all, I had these conversations with Mr. Brown and with Mr. Vedder. And some was issues that had been spoken to us by everybody about the police officers. My answer to the people is that if they want to find out what is really going on, and this includes everybody, news media, the social media, whatever you want to call it, go on and make a meeting with the head departments. If you have an issue with the police department or the fire department or the streets department, make a meeting with them. They'll be more than glad to answer your questions. The police department also, and the fire department, and other entities are doing a wonderful job. Every guy is of what you see and what you hear. Everybody has their own opinions about how things are being done. That's fine. But before we jump into conclusions, including myself, please let's go and talk to the head department. Another thing also, on this phone, no levy at the hospital for voting. Again, I urge the people not to vote for it. Please vote no. If you start asking hard questions, maybe they'll come across. There's a lot of rumors coming out there. And I don't want to start a rumor, but one is we elderly people are on a fixed income. And they could have gone a different route, and they decided not to go on a different route. Please vote no. Another thing, last week I would like to retract a statement that I made concerning downtown. I've been thinking about it. Downtown merchants and the people downtown have a lot to do with what has been done for the public. And by that I mean, I'm glad that you guys are doing it. Please keep on doing it. It doesn't matter if it's to go to somewhere else and all that, but people want to come downtown and enjoy what they're doing downtown. And I recently hadn't said the comment, but I did. And I retracted. Keep on doing what you're doing downtown. We enjoy it. I enjoy it, and the people who downtown, they want to see different things downtown. And with that, I have something to read here. I have been partnered with several members of the organizing committee of the sixth annual Tamal and Mas Fiesta Fiesta, including Counselor Conno, to organize a disco cooking contest. La Tamal and Mas Fiesta will be held on Saturday, December 3rd, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. in downtown Silver City. Only ten contestants will be accepted for the disco cooking contest. The contest will be judged by anyone who attends the Fiesta and buys a ticket to taste the ten different tacos that are prepared by the contestants. The money that is made on those several tickets will be used to award cash prizes to the three contestants who receive the most votes. I would like to encourage local families to enter the contest so we can determine which family is the best at disco cooking. For more information, please call (575) 590-3016 or send a message to tamalfiesta@gmail.com. And Counselor Conno is the one that's doing it. So if you want somebody to cook after the first time to come, please, please let's enjoy something. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ray. Counselor Amon Smith?
Counselor Ray turned down the goblet there, didn't you?
I have really three brief comments. One is that I announced a few meetings ago that our town manager had approved a pilot project for Art and the Crosswalk. And that will commence once the streets are going to be restripped. So that will commence probably towards the end of October, beginning of November. We're going to do a pilot project first on 12th Street to see if the paint is durable. And then the Silver City Arts Association is actually the group that's going to be designing and doing the Art and the Crosswalk. And I'm looking really forward to it. I can't tell you, people send me all kinds of articles about Art and the Crosswalk. So it is coming. The second thing I want to say is that I'm an evidence-based decision-maker, and I think everyone here on the council is. So we like to see data before we make any kind of decisions or take any action. And probably one of the biggest concerns people express to me is noise, downtown noise in Silver City. And one of their major complaints is about sirens. So I do want to remind everyone that there are at least five entities that might be turning on sirens. There's the police, there's the Sheriff's Department, there's the fire department, there's emergency response, and there's state police. So we don't know unless you're a real silent person which one those are. However, next week we'll commence a citizen science project with Dispatch to mine their data to see what it is that we can see in terms of frequencies and trends. And this action is being done with full support of Chief Reynolds and Alex Brown. And I would say today is the first day of early voting. And please get out and vote. Your voice is important.
Thank you, Counselor Amon Smith. Counselor Vedder?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a brief thank you to everyone, the town citizens and residents who are calling, emailing, or stopping me when I'm around town to give me their thoughts about the proposed UTV ordinance. Please keep doing that. As Counselor Amon Smith noted, that we're all evidence-based. So if you have evidence, or you have information that you want to give me, I would appreciate it. Your input is valued. I'm not big on anecdotal evidence. I want anecdotes. I want some scientific numbers about things and information like that in order to make the decision that will be forthcoming at some point when it moves back on to the council's agenda. So thank you for those of you who have stopped me. And I really appreciate you providing the input. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Vedder. Counselor Conno?
Thank you, Mayor. I have two things. First of all, to echo what Counselor Amon Smith said, today was the first day of early absentee voting. Please, please, please vote. It's very important. I voted around noon, and I was the 187th voter. So that's a good start. 365, oh wait, 365 voters today. So that's really good, Silver City. Keep it up. I would also agree with Counselor Ray that you really, really need to consider the mill levy very strongly before you vote. It's going to be a very large burden on our older residents. Tax, property taxes are going to skyrocket for some people. So consider the fact that only, another thing to consider is the fact that only property owners will be the ones taxed for this. So perhaps there's another way that the community could help the hospital but not be hit so hard in the pocketbook. So consider that before you vote. The only other concern I have is I've been approached by a large number of golfers, and they are very concerned about the golf course. I've received so many complaints, and I'm not a golfer. So if I get the terminology a little bit wrong, please forgive me. The sand traps are so solid that they're almost concrete at this point. The rough is over eight inches tall. And the greens have been cut so short that you can see whatever it is that's underneath them that keeps them growing the way they're supposed to. I'm sorry, I don't know the terminology. But they're really concerned about safety right now. And that's something we need to consider before we do our, either adopt or don't adopt the ordinance. It's coming up to make sure that the golf course remains something that people want to use. Right now, golfers are starting to head to Deming a lot because they're not pleased with the way the golf course is going. They're also concerned about the fact that even though it's this Scott Park Golf Course, that's no longer part of the signage. So they feel like maybe it's not going to be a community golf course anymore so much as Western, Mississippi University is going to have so much control over it that things are going to change a little bit too much. I guess there's going to be a change in fees. That's concerning a lot of people. So those are things that we need to consider before we make our decision about renting the golf course. It was suggested to me that maybe there should have been some bids going out to managing properties as well, other possibilities. So those are just things to consider. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Conno. Any other comments from the council? Counselor Ray?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have a quick question. If people want to find out how much their taxes will be, from the Treasury's office, they can tell you right off the bat how much your taxes will be if this is not leaving taxes. Thank you.
Any other comments? I'd just like to point out that during council comments, these are our own opinions. And the city council hasn't taken a position one way or the other. Just wanted to point that out. I have one item. Last Thursday, I attended the meeting in Albuquerque of the Department of Transportation Commission. And District State Engineer Trent Doolittle, and I made a presentation. In his presentation, he strongly recommended that the Department of Transportation approve our request to name the Hudson Street Bridge the Veterans Memorial Bridge. Veterans Day is coming up, November the 11th, on a Friday. And we really want to make this a big deal. And when I say "we," I'm talking primarily about the veterans groups. There's three major groups, the Marines, the Vietnam Vets, and the American Legion. And they're going to put together a program for that event. It's going to be their program. We're not going to interfere in it. The only thing I'll do is just welcome everybody and recognize any dignitaries. But other than that, it's going to be their program. We're really happy about this because what a great way to honor those people who have served in the armed forces for our country. Today, in some circles, patriotic is not, being patriotic is not sort of an end thing. But we're going to make it a patriotic day in Silver City. The next item on the agenda is changes to the agenda. Does the council want to make any changes? Okay, no changes. Next item, seven, is approval of the minutes of the September 27th, 2016 regular meeting. Do I hear a motion? Counselor Amon Smith?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I'm urged to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting of the town of Silver City of September 27th, 2016.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Ms. Mayor, I think that the motion is stated.
Thank you, Counselor Vedder. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is reports. Lucy Whitmarsh, the Executive Director of Main Street, will provide us with the Silver City Main Street Quarterly Report.
Good evening. I'm Lucy Whitmarsh. I'm the Executive Director of the Silver City Main Street Project. And Silver City Main Street has an economic development contract for the town of Silver City for promoting economic vitality in our downtown district. The projects that we've been working on currently are the plan for downtown wayfinding signage. And that is coming to a finished product. And what we anticipate doing with it is developing a design standard for signage in the downtown. And this is for public signage, not for private businesses, but for public signage to give the downtown historic district an identity. And as far as funding for the project, we would include our signage design standards in any projects that we propose to develop in the downtown district. And one of those projects that we are working on and have been working on for a while is the Main Street Plaza Master Plan, which has been completed. And right now, we're working on a next step, which is to obtain funding for restrooms for the Main Street Plaza. And the first, one of the first steps in that process is to go to the Historic Review Committee to present our design standards for what we are proposing for restrooms so that we can get their approval for the project. And we are also, and this is to promote our downtown, we're working on coordinating the Light and Christmas Parade, which is going to be on November 26th, starting at 7:00 on Broadway and ending at the intersection of College and Bullard. And I do have parade entry applications here and information on the parade that I put out on the desk here. Also, the applications can be obtained on our website. That is silvercitymainstreet.com. And the statistical reporting that we did to New Mexico Main Street, where they collectively put together all of the information about what's happened in all of the 28 Main Street districts within the state and compiled that for a report for the Economic Development Department. What we reported in the last quarter, which was July, August, and September, that we had three new businesses in the district with employment of eight full-time equivalent positions. We did have one business that closed, and we lost two employees. So that's a net gain of six employees and two businesses. We did have permitting for a private building project for $31,000 for improvements to a property that's in the district. And then also during the time period, we did have the Taste of Downtown on September 4th and on the Labor Day weekend. And also, prior to that, in August, we had a Welcome Back event for the university that we were calling the Downtown Bash that we worked with the university to have. And it poured rain. So the people that were there had a good time, but it was pretty wet. So then, we did have, with the activities and events and committee meetings that we've had, we had 240 hours of volunteer hours that were donated for work that we did in the last quarter. And I think that everything is going along pretty well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the council members? Counselor Amon Smith?
Thank you for your report. Lucy, at some time in the future, I'm going to report on the site visits that Main Street has been doing because I think that's bringing out a lot of interesting information.
Yes, Ms. Mayor. What Counselor Amon Smith is referring to is that in our Economic Vitality Committee, one of the things that we've done is to go to the businesses and ask a standard set of questions about how things are going for the business and what they think that Main Street can do to help them or improve the district. And so we started off with visiting with the hotels, and then we visited with the restaurants. And we're currently visiting with the galleries. So we have a preliminary report available that we wanted to discuss with Community Development, which is where our organization falls. So we were trying to get a meeting scheduled with James Marshall for going over things that have come up in the interviews that might be able to be implemented either by Main Street or in cooperation with the town. So we are proceeding with that. We are going to wait until we get everything done to do the preliminary work because if we ever finish this project, things could be completely different. So we're working in a preliminary manner. And that's been very enlightening and very interesting. And I really enjoyed that process.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council?
I believe it was the last time you visited with us. We talked about some issues with the SOCO, and I was wondering if you could update us on if there's been a meeting, if something has been decided, et cetera.
And exactly what was the specific? When are we?
I'm referring to the fact that it is not completely ADA accessible. The concession stand, there was a larger discussion about this. There should not be some, you know, that.
I just wanted to clarify what specifically we were discussing. For the concerns of the accessibility of the concession area at the SOCO Theater, we met with the architect, and he evaluated the situation and produced a report. And we turned that over to Alex for review. So we have a report, and we have turned it in for review.
Okay. Mr. Brown, can I get a copy of that?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
In that report, what does that look like? I'm not clear what that means.
It basically says that a ramp cannot be built, an ADA compliant ramp cannot be built in that area. So there's going to be quite a bit of remodeling that's going to have to be done to get the proper grade for a wheelchair ramp in that other area. We're looking at, I mean, we're also looking at trying to open the door out rather than in because one of the issues is you can't open the door to get the compliant ramp. So we're looking at seeing about opening it out to see if we can still do that. So there's some engineering issues that we still need to look at.
You mentioned that you're working on the Main Street Master Plan, and this has been completed. I really, really hope that you considered accessibility issues in that plan because it's important. And I feel like it's falling on deaf ears at this point, and I don't really appreciate it. So I'm hoping that I'm wrong.
You refer to the Main Street Plaza?
I do believe that's what I said, yes. The Main Street Plaza Master Plan, does it involve accessibility concerns?
Yes.
Okay.
And the restroom proposal is our handicapped accessible restrooms?
Accessibility is important. The whole thing needs to be accessible.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? You commented on the wayfinding signage plan, and you said that's nearing completion. I know you presented to the Historic Design Review Committee some pictures of what those signs would look like. Was that the final rendition? Or are you still in the planning stage for what those signs will look like?
That was a preliminary proposal for that to go to Historic Review before we finalize the project. And this has been a service that's been provided by the New Mexico Main Street through their professional service contract that they have where they provide services. And so they're still working on getting us the final draft of the project before we release that information.
So, I mean, but you think it'll be similar to what you presented to us?
Yes, I do think it'll be. We didn't get any feedback from Historic Review that we needed to make any significant changes.
Okay. Counselor Vedder?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. I was wondering, is the council going to be able to take a look at the design of the wayfinding signs?
As soon as we get the report from the New Mexico Main Street, yes, we can release that. But our way of looking at it But our way of looking at it is that it isn't anything that will have to be officially adopted, other than as a standard, which would probably be through the Historic Review Committee as opposed to a town council action. Unless, for some reason, you wanted to bring that to town council for adoption.
Well, I'm not sure that I'm asking for that necessarily, but I do think that the town council should have an opportunity to see what it is the plan is, because it's also, while it's Main Street, it's also the towns, the streets. So I'm not sure, Mr. Brown, is that something that would need to be approved by the town council? Yeah, I thought it did. I mean, Historic Design Review is a committee, so it's...
Yes, it's going to be, it's going to be a policy decision as far as the design of the signs that you're going to allow downtown. And so, that is something even above me. So we're going to be setting that policy, so it needs to come to the council for approval.
But the draft would be presented, we don't have the draft yet, but that's what we're going to be presenting with, our draft.
Well, yeah, I think, just, I would suggest, Ms. Whitmarsh, that you speak with Mr. Brown about how to do that with the mayor, because it is something that I think is of concern to the council, and it may be Main Street, like I said down there, but it's also the towns right away. And I think that the council has input, you know, considerable input on something like that, that's going to be an established policy and what we expect public signage to look like. Yes, okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. To Main Street, for all the good things you do in downtown, it's really an exciting place to be these days. Thank you.
Thank you for your support.
The next item on the agenda is staff reports. Are there any?
Yes, I have my credit. James Crisant, new lieutenant for the police department, he wants to do a short report.
Okay.
Good evening. Lieutenant Crisant, for those of you who don't know me yet, today I'm presenting just a few statistics that we had, the distracted driving citations that we've issued. I'd like the council to keep in mind that the ordinance wasn't enacted until June 14th of this year, so just want everyone to be reminded that the numbers are going to reflect that. During this time period from January 2015 until current, we've issued a number, 104 citations for distracted driving. That includes cellphone usage, texting while driving, things of that nature. Again, the majority of those numbers are going to come from the recent time period in which we have had the ordinance in place. We've conducted several operations downtown to generate a lot of those numbers, so that we can enforce that new law that we have. We have had, within the same timeframe, three citations issued for loud mufflers, and a total of five citations issued for disorderly house, loud music coming from residences through the noise ordinance in the town of Silver City.
Any questions from the council? Thank you very much.
Glad you reminded me. Yes, I'd like to remind everyone currently, the current status, and I just got off the phone about a week, week and a half ago, with the Silver City Motor Vehicle Division. They did advise me that they're currently not issuing any registrations for highway use of UTVs and ATVs at this time. They were going to have a meeting with the state to find out what the status of that is, and I haven't heard back with them on that yet. But currently, at this time, there are no ATVs or UTVs allowed within the town of Silver City. We don't have an ordinance in place, and so that's still illegal at this time. Do you have any questions?
Councilwoman Ray?
Thank you. I'm not looking for ATVs, I'm looking for UTVs. And they are allowed on the side streets, not on pavements, but they are allowed, according to state law.
Again, the city ordinance has its own kind of regulations, and so I ask at this time that all those regulations be adhered to until the city council makes judgment about whether or not to pass an ordinance to allow such things. But at this time, currently, there's no highway use period, nor public roadway use.
Anything else? Thank you very much.
I wanted to respond a little bit about the golf course, to explain sort of why, you're okay, thank you, is, just to explain, and I'm not going to make any excuses, is just to explain the situation of what happened was, Silver Fairways, when they began this year, especially the growing season during the spring, they were running out of money, so they did not do any, very much work on the golf course itself. The university did not take over until May, at the end of their fiscal year, so they did not have anything budgeted to do any additional work at the golf course. And part of the agreement of Silver, the university taking over Silver Fairways, was that the university took on the liability from all the golfers that had already paid their annual dues, so they honored that, yet they received no compensation to do that. So they were sort of dug in a hole from the very beginning. A lot of those specific things, for instance, the sand traps, those have been hard for years. Yes, the greens, there's some issues that happened with the greens. The height of the rofts were high, I was there Friday. They're really nice now. And there's a lot of issues that have happened, and I hope that people don't judge the future of the golf course based on this one summer, because there was a lot that went on. It went between Silver Fairways, the university taking over. Neither of them had money to operate it at that point when things were done. But, at the same time, the ordinance, the lease agreement, has some protections for the town, is that, you know, I get to inspect it, and I get to, you know, make a lot of decisions with the university. I have a lot of input in how things are done. The town does have an ordinance that has a golf course advisory board. We had that back when Silver Fairways first took over. That was going really good until about three years after they took over, then nobody ever complained, so they just, nobody felt that they needed to do it. But I think, you know, there's a lot of apprehension, and what ifs, what's going to happen. I would like to get that board back together, so that they can advise me, so that I can work with the university to make the golf course the best it can be. And, you know, there's a 60-day out. I mean, if either side chooses, says that you're not doing your job, or we don't want to do this anymore, they can get out of it, or we can get them out of it in 60 days. And, you know, the reason Silver Fairways took over, which is made up of 40-some local golfers, was because the town did have a private company running it. They did a big process, RFP process, back in 94, 95, and then in around 96, 97, they were doing such a terrible job that these guys asked, they formed, and they put it together. And, you know, they just, the one good thing, the reason that we went to the university first was, of course, they've got the golf team of professionals that understand that stuff. The town doesn't. And the benefit of working with another government is that we can assist them. There's no anti-donation issues when we're working with the university. There was issues doing that with Silver Fairways, there was a clause that we could do capital upgrades, but because those are things that we own. And so, but with the university, there's a lot more opportunities for us to work with them and make it better. You know, we've been talking with them about doing a lot more marketing, using the marketing department that they can get for free, to market the golf course better. It's always going to remain a community, there's some specific protections in that lease, if you look at it, for the community. It's always going to remain a public golf course. There's protections for the high schools, all the schools, everything in there. So, yes, if the public wants to have some input, or if they have some concerns, please, right now, please come and talk to me. Nobody's talked to me at all. Not one person has said anything.
If the public wants to do it.
Okay. So if they could, please talk to me and let me know.
I'm going to make a motion.
And so, yeah, please, please talk to me if any of you have concerns, please let me know, so I can pass them. I mean, the university, they've been very easy to work with. I mean, not just on this, on other projects, so I don't think they want a black eye out there. It's just, there was those financial issues when it was taken over. And the time to do everything, get everything ready, is in the spring, before the growing and all that stuff. And they took over at the beginning, or near the beginning of summer. The worst time to take over a situation like that, but they stepped up, so.
Will the improvements to the golf course improve my golf score?
Yes, I hope so. It hasn't mine yet, but...
One other quick thing. Would you have Ann send us either an email or a hard copy in our mailboxes of the report that was just made?
Which one?
The police report on citations.
Oh, yeah. We'll get copies of it.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Edison?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for a short, five-minute recess.
Motion for a short five-minute recess? Is there a second?
Yes, there is.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll take a 10-minute recess. I call us back to, I call us back to order. Next on the agenda is public hearings. Thanks to Mrs. Dalberdeen, we have five public hearings tonight. Now let me tell you a little bit about public hearings. According to city ordinance code, each hearing must be treated as a separate hearing, so that means we need to go through step by step the process for each hearing. So, we'll start now, and the first item on the public hearings is 9A, the approval, disapproval of liquor license application number 10111389 for a small brewery liquor license, off-site, first location with on premises consumption and patio service, name of applicant, Little Toad Creek LLC, comma, DBA, Little Toad Creek Brewery and Distillery, HC 68, Box 134, Silver City, New Mexico, 88061. The pair's location, 200 North Village, Silver City, New Mexico, 88061. The hearing will be conducted as follows. The town council will serve as the hearing board, and I, as mayor, will be the presiding officer. First, the applicant shall present his or her case. Next will come witnesses in support of the proponent's case. The applicant or witnesses may then be questioned by the hearing board, which is the city council. The presiding officer will then ask the applicant if that concludes his or her case in chief, and will state that the applicant and his or her witnesses shall remain available to be further questioned by the hearing board or by opponents to the appeal slash application. Following the claims of the applicant's case, witnesses in opposition to the applicant's case shall be permitted to testify, during the course of which the witnesses may address questions to any previous witness, but such questions shall be made through the presiding officer. The presiding officer shall have a sole discretion in directing the question for response, considering whether the question is relevant, is cumulative to other testimony, or is otherwise inappropriate. Have the members of this hearing board had expertise discussions with any person regarding the subject matter of this hearing, or had any communications from any party to this case?
Yes, sir.
All say no. Will all parties and witnesses intending to testify, including those staff members who intend to present testimony or who will be available for questioning, please arise to be sworn in by the town clerk. If you have not been sworn in, you will not be permitted to testify or otherwise participate in this hearing. Ann?
Come on over, Teresa. Please raise your right hand and repeat. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Teresa Dalberdeen.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
That the testimony I'm about to give?
That the testimony I'm about to give?
In the matter before this council?
In the matter before this council?
Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Under penalty of perjury?
Under penalty of perjury.
I, state your name. Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That the testimony I'm about to give?
That the testimony I'm about to give.
In the matter before this council?
In the matter before this council.
Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Under penalty of perjury?
Who will be representing the applicant?
I will.
Could you identify yourself, please?
Teresa Dalberdeen, with Little Toad Creek LLC.
You may present your testimony.
Councilors and Mr. Mayor, thank you so much for hearing all five of these licenses today. Four of these five licenses are actually replacing licenses that we already have, and I'd like to take a minute just to explain the need for that. Little Toad Creek LLC has been operating a small brewers and craft distillers, under craft distillers licenses, in Lake Roberts, technically it's Silver City, but out in the Lake Roberts area, for the last four years. And now, as you probably know, we are planning to move our major operation, our main operation, to the old skating rink downtown Silver City. So we've applied for a change of location for our federal licenses, but the state doesn't allow us to change our location. We have to apply for a new license. So our master license, the craft brewers and the small brewers and the craft distillers that are currently at Lake Roberts, will become void once we start our new operations downtown. And under that, this first license, which is the small brewer liquor license off-site, because our master license is changing, we also have to apply for a new license for our current location downtown. So this will be replacing our current license, which is the exact same premises that we currently have. Nothing is changing there, except the license number will change if this is all approved and once complete, which also, if done, is going to take another couple of months. Please let me know if that explains the situation.
Does the council have any questions?
Yes.
Okay. Does the applicant have any witnesses to speak in support of your application?
No.
Does that conclude your case in chief?
Yes.
The applicant, witnesses in support shall remain available to be further questioned by the hearing board or by opponents to the application. Are there any persons who wish to testify in opposition to this application? There are none. Is there anything else the applicant wishes to be reflected in the record? Is the hearing board prepared to consider this application and render its decision?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do I hear a motion? Councilwoman Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve our liquor license application number... I move to approve a liquor license application number 1011389 for a small brewer liquor license off-site, first location with on-premises consumption and patio service. Name of the applicant, Little Toad Creek LLC, DBA Little Toad Creek Brewery and Distillery, HC-68, Box 134, Silver City, New Mexico, 88061. Proposed location, 200 North Ballard Street, Silver City, New Mexico, 88061.
Thank you, Counselor Ray. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I have a second. That motion is seated.
Counselor Kano? Any more discussion?
Yes, sir.
We have a motion as read by Counselor Ray, and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. The second item on the public hearing is 9B, the approval slash disapproval of liquor license application number 1011390 for a craft distiller liquor license, offset, off-site, first location with on-premises consumption and patio service. Name of the applicant, Little Toad Creek LLC, DBA Little Toad Creek Brewery and Distillery, HC-68, Box 134, Silver City, New Mexico, 88061. Proposed location, 200 North Ballard Silver City, New Mexico, 88061. The hearing will be conducted as follows. The town council will serve as the hearing board, and I as mayor will be the presiding officer. First, the applicant shall present his or her case. Next will come witnesses in support of the proponent's case. The applicant or witnesses may then be questioned by the hearing board. The presiding officer will then ask the applicant if that concludes his or her case in chief, and will state that the applicant and his or her witness shall remain available to be further questioned by the hearing board or by opponents to the appeal or application. Following the close of the applicant's case, witnesses in opposition to the applicant's case shall be permitted to testify, during the course of which the witnesses may address questions to any previous witness, but such questions shall be made through the presiding officer. The presiding officer shall have the sole discretion in directing the question for response, considering whether the question is relevant, is cumulative to other testament, testimony, or is otherwise inappropriate. Have any members of this hearing board had exhortee questions, discussions with any person regarding the subject matter of this hearing, or had any communication from any party to this case?
Yes, sir.
All say no. Will all parties and witnesses intended to testify, including those staff members who intend to present testimony, or who will be available for questioning, please arise to be sworn in by the town clerk. If you have not been sworn in, you will not be permitted to testify or otherwise participate in this hearing.
Please repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Teresa Dalberdeen.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That the testimony I'm about to give?
That the testimony I'm about to give?
In the matter before this council?
In the matter before this council?
Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Under penalty of perjury?
Under penalty of perjury.
Who will be representing the applicant?
Teresa Dalberdeen with Little Toad Creek LLC.
Please proceed.
Counselors and Mr. Mayor, this application is for a craft distillers off-site license. This will be associated with our new master license at 203 South Mill Road. This license will replace our current license on the, the same exact premises where we currently operate our business, 200, am I on the wrong one?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, craft distiller liquor license off-site. Correct.
Any questions from the council? Counselor Bedison?
Mr. Mayor, if this is, if we're both looking at 200 North Ballard Street, not at, not at 203 South Mill Road, correct?
I was just, what I meant to say is that this is in association, this is the off-site with the master license would be at 203 Mill Road. So this is the off-site location license that's associated with that license. All I'm trying to explain is, is the reason that this license is changing is because the master license is changing. I'll just restate that, that'll be simpler. So this will be at 200 North Ballard, at our current, the site of our current location. The exact same premises where we currently operate our business. Nothing will change, except for the license number, and this is hopefully all over.
Thank you. Any other questions? Does that conclude your case in chief?
Yes.
The applicant, witnesses in support shall remain available to be further questioned by the hearing board or by opponents to the application. Are there any persons who wish to testify in opposition to this application? There be none? Is the hearing board prepared to consider this application and render its decision?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Ray?
I move to approve a liquor license application number 1011390 for a craft distiller liquor license off-site, first location with on-premises consumption and patio service. Name of applicant, Little Toad Creek LLC, DBA Little Toad Creek Brewery and Distillery, HC-68, Box 134, Silver City, New Mexico, 88061. Proposed location, 200 North Ballard, Silver City, New Mexico, 88061.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Kano?
That motion is seated.
We have a motion as read by Counselor Ray, and we have a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. Ann, am I reading too fast, or do you, do you need me to slow down?
I'm okay.
Are you okay? All right. The third item on the public hearings is 9C, the approval slash disapproval of liquor license number 1011383 for a craft distiller liquor license with on-premises consumption. Name of applicant, Little Toad Creek LLC, DBA Little Toad Creek Brewery, HC-68, Box 134, Silver City, New Mexico, 88061. Proposed location, 203 South Mill Road, Silver City, New Mexico, 88061. The hearing will be conducted as follows. The town council will serve as the hearing board, and I as mayor will be the presiding officer. First, the applicant shall present his or her case. Next will come witnesses in support of the proponent's case. The applicant or witnesses may then be questioned by the hearing board. The presiding officer will then ask the applicant if that concludes his or her case in chief, and will state that the applicant and his or her witnesses shall remain available to be further questioned by the hearing board or by opponents to the appeal slash application. Following the close of the applicant's case, witnesses in opposition to the applicant's case shall be permitted to testify, during the course of which the witnesses may address questions to any previous witness, but such questions shall be made through the presiding officer. The presiding officer shall have the sole discretion in directing the question for response, considering whether the question is relevant, is cumulative to other testimony, or is otherwise inappropriate. Have any members of the hearing, of this hearing board had exhortee discussions with any person regarding the subject matter of this hearing, or had communications from any party to this case?
Yes, sir.
All say no. Will all parties and witnesses intended to testify, including those staff members who intend to present testimony, or who will be available for questioning, please arise to be sworn in by the town clerk. If you have not been sworn in, you will not be permitted to testify or otherwise participate in this hearing.
Okay, repeat after me. I, state your name.
Aye, Teresa Dalberdeen.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That the testimony I'm about to give?
That the testimony I'm about to give?
In the matter before this council?
In the matter before this council?
Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Under penalty of perjury?
Under penalty of perjury.
Who will be representing the applicant?
Teresa Dalberdeen with Little Toad Creek LLC.
Please proceed.
Counselors and Mr. Mayor, this license is for a craft distillers license at a new location that's currently under construction. The purpose of this is to expand our production capabilities in the distillery we've been producing for four years and have a, a growing market for our product. The construction should be complete by November, and we're trying to time the approval of all of our licenses on the federal and state level to come aside with that, so we can begin production.
Any questions from the council? Counselor Bedison?
Thank you, Mayor. I have one question. Is it your intent per the town ordinance number 1055 to register this new separate location before opening and operations?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Does the applicant have any witnesses to speak in support of your application?
No.
Does that conclude your case in chief?
Yes.
The applicant witnesses or applicant in support shall remain available to be further questioned by the hearing board or by opponents to the application. Are there any persons who wish to testify in opposition to this application? Counselor Kano, I'm sorry.
I have a question, I guess it's going to be Mr. Brown, but you might need to ask Ms. Mackey. When we, when we're done with the, the motion, on, on this one and also the next one, it says, D'Yi Business has Little Toad Creek Brewery, we need to add And Distillery, correct? Because the whole name is And Distillery.
It depends on the alcohol.
Okay, so, so for those two we won't, and then just for the last one? Or for, for this one, and I can ask again for the next one if we, if we're supposed to talk about it?
They're fine, except that last one.
Okay. Right. Thank you.
Counselor Ray, do you have something?
No.
Okay. Are there any persons who wish to testify in opposition to this application? There are none? Is the hearing board prepared to consider this application and render its decision?
Yes, sir.
All say aye. Yes? Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Ray?
I move to approve a liquor license application number 1011383 for a craft distiller liquor license with on-premises consumption. Name of applicant, Little Toad Creek LLC, DBA Little Toad Creek Brewery, HC-68, Box 134, Silver City, New Mexico, 88061. Proposed location, 203 South Mill Road, Silver City, New Mexico, 88061.
Thank you, Counselor Ray. Is there a second? Counselor Kano?
I have a second. That motion is seated.
Okay. We have a motion as read, and we have a second. Any more discussion?
Yes, sir.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. The fourth item on the public hearing, hearing, the 9D, is the approval slash disapproval of liquor license application number 1011386 for a small brewery liquor license with on-premises consumption. Name of applicant, Little Toad Creek LLC, DBA Little Toad Creek Brewery, HC-68, Box 134, Silver City, New Mexico, 88061. Proposed location, 203 South Mill Road, Silver City, New Mexico, 88061. The hearing will be conducted as follows. The town council will serve as the hearing board, and I as mayor will be the presiding officer. First, the applicant shall present his or her case. Next will come witnesses in support of the proponent's case. The applicant or witnesses may then be questioned by the hearing board. The presiding officer will then ask the applicant if that concludes his or her case in chief, and will state that the applicant and his or her witnesses shall remain available to be further questioned by the hearing board or by opponents to the appeal slash application. Following the close of the applicant's case, witnesses in opposition to the applicant's case shall be permitted to testify, during the course of which the witness may address questions to any previous witness, but such questions shall be made through the presiding officer. The presiding officer shall have the sole discretion in directing the question for response, considering whether the question is relevant, is cumulative to other testimony, or is otherwise inappropriate. Have any members of this hearing board had exhortee discussions with any persons regarding the subject matter of this hearing, or had any communications from any party to this case?
Yes, sir.
All say no. Will all parties and witnesses intend to testify, including those staff members who intend to present testimony, or who will be available for questioning, please arise to be sworn in by the town clerk. If you have not been sworn in, you will not be permitted to testify or otherwise participate in these hearings.
Please repeat after me. I, state your name.
Aye, Teresa Dalberdeen.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That the testimony I'm about to give?
That the testimony I'm about to give?
In the matter before this council?
In the matter before this council?
Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Under penalty of perjury?
Under penalty of perjury.
Who will be representing the applicant?
Teresa Dalberdeen with Little Toad Creek LLC.
Please proceed.
Counselors, Mr. Mayor, this application is for a small brewers license at the same location as our craft distillers license, 203 South Mill Road, at the new warehouse that we are currently constructing, and it will replace our current small brewers license.
Any questions from the council? Counselor Bedison?
Um, is it your intent, thank you, Mayor, is it your intent to register this separate location per town ordinance number 1055, 10 dash 55, before opening and operations?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions? Does the applicant have any witnesses to speak in support of your application?
No.
Does that conclude your case in chief?
Yes.
The applicant shall remain available to be further questioned by the hearing board or by opponents to the application. Are there any persons who wish to testify in opposition to this application? There be a none? Is the hearing board prepared to consider this application and render its decision?
Yes, sir.
All say yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Ray?
I move to approve a liquor license application number 1011386 for a small brewer liquor license with on-premises consumption. Name of applicant, Little Toad Creek LLC, DBA Little Toad Creek Brewery, HC-68, Box 134, Silver City, New Mexico, 88061. Proposed location, 203 South Mill Road, Silver City, New Mexico, 88061.
Thank you. Second?
Mr. Mayor, I have a second. That motion is seated.
Thank you, Counselor Kano. Is there any more, is there any discussion? We have a motion as read by Counselor Ray, and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. The last public hearing, 9E... The last public hearing, 9E, is the approval/disapproval of liquor license application number 101-1391 for a wholesaler liquor license. Name of applicant: Little Toad Creek LLC, DBA Little Toad Creek Brewery, HC-68 Box 134, Silver City, New Mexico, 88061. Proposed location: 203 South Mill Road, Silver City, New Mexico, 88061. The hearing will be conducted as follows. Did I try to do this by memory?
You tried.
The town council will serve as the hearing board, and I, as mayor, will be the presiding officer. First, the applicant shall present his or her case. Next will come witnesses in support of the proponent's case. The applicant or witnesses may then be questioned by the hearing board. The presiding officer will then ask the applicant if that concludes his or her case in chief and will state that the applicant and his or her witnesses shall remain available to be further questioned by the hearing board or by opponents to the appeal slash application. Following the close of the applicant's case, witnesses in opposition to the applicant's case shall be permitted to testify, during the course of which the witnesses may address questions to any previous witness, but such questions shall be made through the presiding officer. The presiding officer shall have the sole discretion in directing the question for response, considering whether the question is relevant, is cumulative to other testimony, or is otherwise inappropriate. Have any members of this hearing board had any exportee discussions with any person regarding the subject matter of this hearing or had any communications from any party involved?
No, sir.
I'll say no. Will all parties and witnesses intended to testify, including those staff members who intend to present testimony or who will be available for questioning, please rise to be sworn in by the town clerk. If you have not been sworn in, you won't be permitted to testify or participate.
Please repeat after me. I state my name.
I, Teresa Delberdine.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
that the testimony I am about to give
that the testimony I am about to give
in the matter before this council
in the matter before this council
is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth
is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth
under penalty of perjury.
This is Delberdine. I'm going to make a stretch and assume you're the applicant.
I am, yes.
Please proceed.
Counselors and Mr. Mayor, this application is for a wholesaler license. Under this license, we would be allowed to distribute our beer and spirits, only the products that we manufacture ourselves, to anyone in the state of New Mexico who holds the appropriate license to resell spirits or beer in their establishment. We're going to be producing about 15 times more beer than we currently are, so we're going to need a market for that, and this allows us to reach wide across the state. We hope this will be a really positive economic impact for our community.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the council? Counselor Edison?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Delberdine, is it your intent to register your new separate location before opening and operations per Town Ordinance Number 10-55?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions? Does the applicant have any witnesses to speak in support of your application?
No.
Okay. There are none. Does that conclude your case in chief?
Yes.
Please, the applicant, will you remain available to be further questioned by the hearing board or by opponents to the application? Are there any persons who wish to testify in opposition to this application? And there are none. Is the hearing board prepared to consider this application and render its decision?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Ray?
I move to approve a liquor license application number 101-1391 for a wholesaler liquor license. Name of applicant: Little Toad Creek LLC, DBA Little Toad Creek Brewery, HC-68 Box 134, Silver City, New Mexico, 88061. Proposed location: 203 South Mill Road, Silver City, New Mexico, 88061.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
First, Mr. Mayor, upon your presentation, this one does need to say Little Toad Creek Brewery and Distillery, correct? I think both need to be changed, no?
You're right. You're right. Right.
Add it to the list.
May? Do I make the motion over here?
Yes.
Okay. I move to approve a liquor license application number 101-1391 for a wholesaler liquor license. Name of applicant: Little Toad Creek LLC, doing business as Little Toad Creek Brewery, HC-68.
Forget, not a story. That's a story. Okay.
I moved to approve a liquor license application number 101-1391 for a wholesaler liquor license. Name of applicant: Little Toad Creek LLC, DBA Little Toad Creek Brewery and Distillery, HC-68 Box 134, Silver City, New Mexico, 88061. Proposed location: 203 South Mill Road, Silver City, New Mexico, 88061.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Connell?
I second that motion and speed.
No motion and a second. Any discussion? We have a motion as read by Counselor Ray and a second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
That concludes, thank you very much, Teresa. I know it's exciting to see the activity going on down in that part of downtown because up until now, it's kind of been a dead area down there, so I can easily see activity spreading into that area, if only they had the old railroad station there. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is new business. Under new business, item 11A, is the approval/disapproval of Resolution Number 2016-26, a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Silver City naming the Visitor Center Access Area located on Hudson Street in Silver City as, quote, "The Downtown and Silver City Greenways Trailhead," end quote. Counselor Lehman Smith, I think you have this one?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Even though this area is located in Council Ray's district, I really appreciate the capability of carrying this resolution. I became aware when we were working on the Bicycle Master Plan how important naming is in terms of grants, getting grants. And currently, the Visitor Center is surrounded by asphalt and a very, you know, some few plantings. And we found out, looking at various grants, especially on alternative transportation grants and hiking trail grants and a variety of beautification grants, that names matter. And so, the area that is sometimes used for parking and for access to the Greenways Trails and the Green Ditch Trails would better be named as an access area or a trailhead in order for us to qualify and more ably get beautification and improvement monies for that area. I am therefore requesting that my councilor support the renaming of this area, which is currently mostly black asphalt around the Visitor Center, be known as the Downtown and Silver City Greenways Trailhead.
Thank you. Counselor Lehman Smith? Does the council have any questions for Counselor Lehman Smith?
Last one.
Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Lehman Smith?
I move to approve Resolution Number 2016-26, a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Silver City, naming the Visitor Center Access Area located on Hudson Street in Silver City as the Downtown and Silver City Greenways Trailhead.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second? Counselor Ray?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion as read by Counselor Lehman Smith and a second. Ann, is there any further discussion? Roll call, please, Ann.
Counselor Edison?
I, Counselor Anderson.
I.
Counselor Ray?
Please.
Counselor Connell?
Hi.
I'll say yes. Motion carries. The next item is 11B, the approval/disapproval of Resolution Number 2016-27, a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Silver City modifying and amending the Town of Silver City Employees Personnel Manual. Mr. Brown?
This resolution is to change the name of one of the holidays in the personnel manual, specifically Good Friday to Spring Holiday. This way, it allows the employees to celebrate that day however they choose without the Town having to justify the name of the holiday.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Edison?
I move to approve the Resolution of the 2016-27, a resolution of the Town Council, what's, wrong one. No, it's the right one. A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Silver City modifying and amending the Town of Silver City Employees Personnel Manual.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion and speed.
Thank you. Counselor Lehman Smith. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ann, roll call, please.
Counselor Edison?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Ray?
Aye.
Counselor Connell?
Aye.
I'll say aye. Motion carries. The next item is 11C, the approval/disapproval of bid number 16/17-1, 450-gallon recycling tubs. Mr. Brown?
The Town received one bid on the tubs from Snyder Industries of Lincoln, Nebraska, in the amount of $56,416.08. This is for 168 450-gallon commercial cardboard recycling containers. These will be provided to the businesses, and they will only be used for cardboard. For the new recycling program that the Town will be starting, hopefully at the beginning of 2017, calendar year 2017.
Thank you. Any questions? Counselor Edison?
Thank you, Mayor. Are the recycling tubs, are they covered?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
They're like the black ones that we have now. They're just going to be green.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Brown? How many did you say?
168.
168.
It's based on the number of commercial accounts that the Solid Waste Authority currently maintains. I believe there's a, we're ordering 10% more than they actually do supply right now. So it's based on the number that they currently supply to businesses in town.
Thank you. Any other questions? Do I hear a motion? Counselor Lehman Smith?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve bid number 16/17-1 for 450-gallon recycling tubs.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
No, wait. Per staff's recommendation, to award the bid as follows
Okay.
to Snyder Industries for just, should I say the total amount? For $56,416.08.
Right, that construction.
Second?
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion.
Counselor Edison? Motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. The next item was 11D, the approval/disapproval of bid number 16/17-2, 65-gallon recycling carts. Mr. Brown?
Again, these are the 65-gallon, they're exactly the same as what we currently have for our garbage collection, just that they will be green for recycling. The number of containers is 2,500 that we are ordering. This is based on a count of the number of addresses, residences in Silver City that are currently recycled. And so, what I didn't, the information I didn't give you at the last one, this is all being paid out of the loan that we already received, and all of this is within the amount that we received from the loan. Between the trucks and this, we have enough money from the loan. We don't have to put any additional money into it.
Thank you. Any questions? Counselor Edison?
Thank you. I have to ask this. Mr. Brown, are they going to have a recycling logo or a town logo on them so that they're separate from the trash cans so that people don't put trash in them?
They're going to be, they're going to have the town logo on them and the recycling logo, I believe. Not positive, but they're going to be green. I don't know. I can't tell you if they have the recycling.
So we'll have to really make sure we educate folks because so many recycling bins are the color of our trash cans.
Yes.
So, okay.
What if they're colored?
What?
What if they're green?
Well, that might be, that might be important.
So, I'll check after this meeting before we place the order that we add that recycling logo to it.
Okay.
If it's not already there.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions? Do I hear a motion?
I take it.
Counselor Lehman Smith?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I move to approve bid number 16/17-2, per staff recommendation, to be awarded to Auto Environmental for $98,700.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Edison?
I second the motion and speed.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion as read, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 11E, appointments to the cemetery board. The Town received one application for the cemetery board by Timothy Crabtree.
Oh, yeah.
As per the chair of the cemetery board, Jeffrey Fell recommended Mr. Crabtree's appointment. I would like to appoint Mr. Crabtree if there are no objections from the council. Any objections?
No.
No, sir.
Mr. Crabtree is so appointed. The next item on the agenda is 11F, the approval/disapproval of executive session pursuant to NMSA 1978, Section 10-15-1, H2, regarding limited personnel matters to discuss the Town Manager's contract. If we do go into executive session, only the matter listed on the agenda and in the motion will be discussed. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Edison?
I move the Town Council go into executive session pursuant to NMSA 1978, Section 10-15-1, H2, regarding limited personnel matters to discuss the Town Manager's contract and add a shore to re- a short recess prior to going into executive session.
Okay. We have a motion as read by Counselor Edison. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion.
Counselor Lehman Smith, roll call, please, Ann.
Counselor Edison?
Aye.
Counselor Lehman Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Ray?
Aye.
Counselor Connor?
Aye.
I'll say aye. We'll take a short recess, and we'll come back after we finish the executive session. We're back in open meeting.
We have to move to get back into open meeting.
Okay, do we have a motion to go back into open meeting?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Edison?
I move that we adjourn to open meeting, that we adjourn from post, from executive session. Nothing that we spoke about was anything other than what was stated in the original motion to move into executive session. No decisions were made.
Okay, do we have a second?
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion.
All in favor, do we need a roll call?
We got a roll call.
Roll call, Ann.
Counselor Edison?
Aye.
Counselor Edison?
Aye.
Counselor Ray?
Aye.
Counselor Connor?
Aye.
I'll say aye. We're back in open meeting. Next item on the agenda is 11G, the approval slash disapproval of town manager's contract proposal. I have negotiated the contract with the town manager, Mr. Alex Brown, which is in your packet, and you've all had a chance to review that. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Edison?
I move to approve the town manager's contract proposal as presented.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Lehman Smith?
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir.
We have a motion and a second to approve the town manager's contract that's contained in your councilor package. All in favor, say aye.
Can we do a roll call?
Do we need a roll call in that, Ann? Okay, let's have a roll call. Yeah, okay, you're right. We don't need one, but we want to take a roll call for a special purpose. Roll call, Ann.
Counselor Edison? I vote aye, and I want to state unequivocally that our town manager has my full support. He's excellent. I know that he works incredibly well with staff, and I just have to say that his love of this town and the love of his staff and all of the information that he provides to us between meetings, at every meeting, all of that, I can't say enough about the work ethic that you have and your strength and character and how you really do make sure that your staff will take care of Mr. Brown. Thank you very, very much.
Counselor Lehman Smith? I vote aye on this motion, and I too want to acknowledge what a pleasure it has been and will continue to be to work with our town manager, Mr. Brown, and how much I admire your capabilities and your competency and your compassion for the whole town and everyone in it, and especially for the town staff. Counselor Johnson?
Aye. Mr. Brown, thank you. You are a very highly respected individual. You are a hard worker. You do things from the heart, and that's what people want to know. Congratulations, and we hope to have you for a long time.
Counselor Connor?
Thank you. I vote aye as well, and I'd just like to say, you know, there's so many places in town that feel the effects of what you do every day, and we really appreciate it. And I would just like to thank you and your family for giving us a few more years of your time.
I don't get to vote, but I do want to, I do want to express my appreciation to you, Alex, for all that you do for Silver City. Everywhere I go in town, or either out of town at different meetings around the state, your name often comes up as being sort of the model for how a city manager should run a town. So I appreciate all you do too, and I appreciate all your help. And with that, with all voting aye, the motion carries.
Sorry, speech.
No, that's what I, what I had James for, was to do the speeches. I really appreciate, I really appreciate your confidence that you have for me, and it's, working with councils like yourself, counselors like yourselves who really believe in the community and what you do, makes my job so much easier. It's just feeding off of what you guys feel and the way the staff feels. I mean, those guys are why we get done what we get done. So I look forward to continue doing what I do, and hopefully even doing it better. I know there's going to be some challenges in the next few years, but we'll be okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And while we're at it, I want to express appreciation to Mr. Cabron for all that he does for the city, and then the super lady beside, behind all of the things that really happened with the council. We couldn't function without Ann's help. Thank you very much, Ann. This concludes the business of the town of Silver City. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adjourn.
Do I have a motion? Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion.
Do I have a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This motion, this meeting is adjourned.